Well, welcome. Tonight, once again, we have the pleasure of meeting one of those special people in Milford. Somebody who not only has an opinion, voices and opinion, but will stand up and say, "I'm willing to work and invest personal time to make it happen." Somebody who cares enough about the kids in our town to work towards making it better. And somebody who grew up in the schools, so be a unique perspective. RJ, why don't we start with an introduction?
All right. Well, thank you for having me tonight, Al. I'm RJ Sheedy. I'm a lifelong Milford resident. I graduated through our school systems, went all the way from Shining Star to the high school. I've been a member of Milford TV since long since existed. If you might remember, I hosted a little show down there for some time. Worked on your show for maybe a little longer. I'm a town meeting member, been one since 2019, and this is my second time running for school committee.
Now, RJ, I start the show, as you know, with the same question I end the show with. RJ, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, Al, I think you and hopefully everybody else watching this will decide to vote for me because I think that my unique perspective and knowledge that I have will bring a clear value to the school committee as we face all the challenges that are ahead for us as a district. My unique perspective, my unique perspective is that I'm a recent graduate of the school system. So I'm pretty close to our students to understand their needs. And I was also there experiencing a lot of the problems that they have. So there's a lot of firsthand knowledge that I have that I can bring to the table, my knowledge. I've been a town meeting member for, oh God, three, four years now. In high school, I filmed almost every single school committee meeting for like a year or two with Milford TV. So there's a lot of knowledge on the town, the process of the school committee, their roles and responsibilities that I believe that I have that will be really valuable for the schools as we go forward. So I think I'm the right candidate to help the schools get out of COVID and bring us forward into the future for 21st century learning. And I hope, you know, in the next hour, we talk about, you know, all good things about the school and, you know, everything else.
Now, COVID-19 is obviously at the top of everybody's hit list.
Of course.
There's a lot of differing opinions. I think most people believed kids should be back in school. But what's your feeling on how do you get them back in school?
So, you know, there's a, there's a lot of challenges to get them back into school, obviously. Just looking around the community right now, we understand that, you know, there is a big drive from parents to go back to school. They, like everybody, wants what's best for their students. Like everybody in the school, they want their students, their kids, back in the classroom, full-time. They want them back full-time. And frankly, I agree with them. They should be back full-time. I, as a student, know firsthand, and I know just from watching some of my cousins have to deal with, you know, remote learning, that students learn best and they thrive best in person, in the classroom, full-time, with, you know, a regimen schedule in front of them. So it is best for everybody, especially the students, to be back in the classroom full-time. How do we get there? That's a totally different discussion to have. I think there's a lot of stuff that has to be in place first and foremost for us to get back there. You know, it's, you know, if, I think there's a lot of discussion and listening and understanding that has to happen from everybody at the table, the school committee, the parents, the teachers. I think there's a somewhat of a divide in the town right now between the school and the teachers and the parents. Mostly the parents and the teachers as to what's best for the kids because we all want what's best for the kids. We just have different ways of getting there. And I don't want to minimize the teachers' concerns either as to what they're worried about going back there. You know, those are all very real concerns. They don't want to get sick themselves. They don't want to pass off, you know, an illness to anybody that's in their household with them, you know. They want to have the opportunity to maybe get vaccinated before they get back. Those are all discussions that should be on the table as we figure out how do we get our students back to this classroom safely, full-time. How do we get back there? That's an enormously complex question. And I don't, as a candidate for school committee, have all the answers as to how we get back there. I know the first thing that we have to do is just start listening and understanding where everybody's coming from to figure out what's best for all of us in the community.
Well, you talk about vaccinating teachers. I mean, I'm kind of annoyed that our governor isn't classifying teachers, the same as other frontline workers. You know, nobody questions nurses, doctors, firemen, policemen. But what can we do? I mean, you can't sneak down to the hospital and go to Ed Kelly's office and say, "Hey, Uncle Ed, can you slip us 600 extra vaccines?" What can we do to put some pressure on the government to move our teachers up higher on the list?
So I do believe that our state government is listening to what's happening at the ground game inside the communities. I believe Representative Murray actually maybe signed a letter recently saying, "Hey, I think that, you know, teachers need to get bumped up in the line to get vaccinated." So, you know, that's fantastic. If somebody at home wants to try and personally do something to move this forward, call Brian Murray, call Ryan Fattman, have them, you know, start advocating at the state level to push them ahead of the line. I agree with you. You know, there's so many frontline workers that serve our communities. You know, I go to work at Stop and Shop every day in Franklin. I can't tell you how many of my coworkers that I stand next to are wishing that they have the opportunity to have the vaccine right now. But, you know, it's, you know, there's a process. There's certain people that have to get it first. I have no problem with, you know, nurses getting it first, the doctors getting it first, the more vulnerable people getting it first. Those are the people that should have it first. But, you know, after that, we got to look at the people on the front lines, the people that kept our communities moving throughout the COVID crisis, our police officers, our firefighters, our teachers, our grocery store workers. And, you know, there's, you know, if you want to do something, you know, advocate at the state level as to, to the right people to push for the right things. I wish that there was more that RJ Sheedy could do to give everybody a shot. Believe me, I want my shot right now, but, you know, I understand I have to wait. I understand that I'm not next in line and that my time will come. But, you know, there is, you know, a lot of advocating that can be done on the community level to the right people above us that could maybe impact some meaningful change.
Well, that's, you know, it's the first time I've thought about that. But if Brian is already as our state rep advocating for our teachers, boy, reaching out to him saying, "Is there anything else we can do?" Because that's going to be the biggest thing is, I can't imagine anybody went into teaching for the money. It's got to be a passion for teaching because there's so many other ways they could make as much or more money without having the responsibility of, you know, 20 lives in their hands every minute of the day. But, you know, writing to Brian, to Ryan, and just saying, "Look, we support you." And whatever you can do to get our teachers high on the list, I think my email goes out tonight.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, think about this for a second. In September, when everybody was going back to school, what were we doing as a community? As, as a country, basically? We were praising our teachers for the work and everything that they were doing for us. And now there's certain people that are expecting them to walk back into the building without the opportunity to have what is going to make them feel the safest in that building? Yeah, that kind of makes me feel a little weird that, like, we're putting, you know, so much blame on the teachers who have the deepest care for our students in our community. It just irks me a little bit.
Well, yeah, and I mean, realistically, most of the teachers are parents. And I can see them being a little worried that if they're going to go step into a class of 20-plus kids, I mean, they could, or they will be at a higher risk, and they could bring it home to their kids.
Right, right. I mean, if you look at the science, and I know you're a big science guy, you know, there's a lot of science that shows that schools are maybe the safest places for students because COVID doesn't travel so closely in them. That's great, but is safest still safe? I mean, this, I'm sure, is still like, you know, the minuscule risk that, you know, somebody takes their mask off, take a little drink of water or whatever, and like, you know, oops, we cough, and like, you know, Sally next to us like rubs her eye and like it gets in there or something, or something crazy. But like, you know, do we want to run the risk as a community with spreading the virus unnecessarily through us? No. And this is a hard conversation to have, right? Because like, I want the kids to go back in school. But like, we need to be thoughtful about it and careful about it and do it in a safe way that's going to be the most impactful in a good way. I want them back as soon as everybody else wants them back. You know, after I was done working for the union full-time, when COVID kind of knocked me out, I wanted to go back to Worcester State to finish my education. But I, as a student, made the personal decision, you know, I don't want to have to sit at home five, six, seven, eight, I don't know, 15 hours a week on Zoom. I don't want to be leveraged with the, you know, financial responsibility to having to pay back a student loan for having to have this kind of an educational experience. I made the personal decision to wait a year for things to get back to semi-normal. And, you know, that's a decision that a lot of people had to make, I'm sure. And just because I made that decision, I know how meaningful it is for our parents and our families and our teachers and everybody to be back in that classroom full-time because I had to make the decision, this is what's going to be best for me. So, you know, if a shot or a certain type of mask or, you know, something silly is going to make, you know, not silly, I'm not going to diminish it like that. But, you know, if something as small as a mask, I'll say something as small as a certain type of mask or whatever, will make, you know, our staff and our students feel safer with going back, why shouldn't we be pushing and advocating and asking for that on every level we could?
Yeah, and especially when you talk about our teachers versus others, a lot of us still remember what our teachers did to this town and their union. When it was years back, we ran into real financial problems, I saw a lot of teachers in different towns offering to delay their raise, which made no sense to me because if I can't afford to pay for it now, I can't really afford to pay twice as much. Our teachers and the union did this. So, you know, when everybody talks about the unions only out for themselves, the union came to the FinCom and said, "We're willing to forego, give up our raise if you'll take all the money you save and make sure it goes towards saving teachers' jobs." I found that amazing. You never think-
This, go ahead.
I say, you never think of a union leading off with, "We'll take less benefit to help the town and the teachers." It was amazing to me.
It is, it is. And what was I going to say? There's a flip side of that too, where, you know, where we can talk about, like, you know, what's best for the school. You know, I come into the finance committee one day as a school committee member, and I can say, "Hey, we need all of these new initiatives and all of these programs for the better of the school." But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, there has to be some common ground between me on the school committee and us as a town to say, "Okay, of course we all want this. This is what's best for the, for our schools. Sure, it's best for our teachers for them to get their raise, but what's best for the town as a community as a whole?" And at the time, you know, that decision was to, you know, not go forward with getting a raise that year. You know, last year, you know, that decision was, for the school department, was to not go forward with the initiatives that they had that year. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, I don't want to ever have to make that decision. But I understand that, you know, sometimes sacrifice has to be made for the better of the community. It's still going to be my job as a school committee member to come in there and push for everything that the schools and our principals are saying and asking that they need. But when it comes time to make the decision, what's best for the town? I'm not going to come in there and bankrupt us because, guess what? You know, the town hall's a restaurant, you know, there's still the services in town that they have to provide to our residents. You know, we love to think the school is like, you know, the centerpiece of our community, and it is. And at budget time, we always treat it as such because it is. But at the same time, we can't walk in there and bankrupt the town for the benefit of the school. We still have to have a town at the end of the day, you know?
Tell me now, what do you see as the three biggest challenges you think the school committee is going to face in the next few years?
In the next few years? So number one, first and foremost, hopefully this is for that just the next year or so. Hopefully this is for the long term, but obviously we have to deal with COVID. I know, I know, I'm going to talk about COVID again, but it's a, it's a real issue that we have to come out of and come out of strongly. For the last year, there have been, you know, various types of learning options given to our students between remote and hybrid and, you know, the Zoom room that's happening right now. Just to get our kids back in the classroom full-time and on a regular regimen again is going to take a lot of work. And I'm not going to say this as a buzz term. I'm saying this as like a serious thing. We need to focus on like the social, emotional learning aspect of our students as they re-enter the classroom. I've had a lot of conversations with, like, you know, friends of my dad or my mother or like, you know, just my neighbors of mine who, you know, talked about like, you know, the changes that they've seen in their children since all of this happened. And just because we opened up back up the schools and sent them back in there, these issues, these, you know, issues that they've been having personally, you know, whether it's like mental health issues or whatever it is, those aren't going to go away just because, "Hey, we opened up the school. That solves the problem," right? No. So like, we have to do like, you know, some, you know, major work on investing in social, emotional learning aspects for our students. There's a budget proposal right now that, that was brought forward, maybe by Lisa Kincaid, I think, to bring in a, you know, another counselor or something fantastic. Maybe we should more seriously look at that next year. But, you know, the biggest problem going forward is COVID. How do we manage it, you know, going forward for the rest of the year? Are we going to make another change in the teaching style that we're doing for our students? How do we make the decisions to go back full-time in September if that's what we do? What's the work going to be over the summer and throughout the next two months? We go back to make it as normal and seamless of a transition as possible. So, you know, I hate that I'm still talking about COVID, but, you know, it's very real. It's very serious. It's not going to go anywhere overnight just because we'll be back up the schools. Just because we'll be back up the schools, we're going to have more problems going to come to the surface that, not to say that we've been ignoring, but like, you know, that we haven't yet fully realized. So that's first and foremost. COVID is going to still be an issue, hopefully just for the next year. But, you know, for some time going forward. Number two, number two issue is, will be the facilities. And, and yes, Al, yes, Al, there is a new school coming. Sixty-eight years is probably, in sixty-eight years, there's probably going to be a new school coming. But in the meantime, what do we do? You know, Rob Quinn is doing some fantastic work, you know, updating Stacy the flooring, you know, getting some new stuff for the boiler room, you know. There's work being done every single day on our schools to make sure that they have the longest lifespan possible. And as a committee and as a district, we need to support the work that is being put into our facilities to make them last as long as we can. And then on top of that, we got to look forward as to what's going to happen in the next sixty-eight years. What are we going to do with our facilities? Do we rebuild the high school? Do we renovate? Do we add a new wing? What happens with Stacy? Like, you know, there's a lot of, you know, options that we have to seriously look at and consider as a community as to what, you know, the future of education is going to look like in Milford. So, you know, our facilities is the second top issue beyond COVID. And then number three, the number three top issue, I think, that the school department has to, you know, really grapple with is better servicing our EL and special needs populations in the district. Milford's a really, really unique community with the population that we have, as we know. And because we always talk about it in town, we know that we have a large number of special education students and English language learners in town, many of whom just simply need better services. They need, you know, more support from us as a school to be successful in life and to basically move forward. So we need to sit down and have more conversations on them and make sure that they have all of the keys that they need to be successful when they get out of Milford High School because those are some of our neediest kids in a way because we need to make sure that we're preparing them for what's best after life. And I can see the need to make, to making more changes for the better for that population of our students. And there's a lot of work and discussions being done right now. There's a lot of budget proposals and initiatives being brought forward to add more staff and add more, you know, curriculum options and stuff like that for them. But nonetheless, we got to continue watching that population and making sure that they're being fully serviced to the best ability that town can give. So top three issues facing the school department will be COVID, 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 hopefully just for the next year, but, you know, we still got to be mindful of it. Our facilities and better servicing our special education EL populations.
Well, you're number, you mentioned facilities. Okay, we're in a scenario where it's a 3-3 tie at the school committee. And RJ Sheedy gets to decide. He's the seventh vote. Where would you go first on facilities? What buildings would you start with?
Well, I sure hope that there's going to be more discussion and more thoughtfulness given to this answer when I make the decision if there's a split versus just the gut instincts that I'm going to tell you right now. But I'm going to go with the high school. There's a bigger population in the high school. I think that there's a lot that can be done inside Stacy to expand its lifespan more. The classrooms there are fantastic. Sure, you know, maybe we could do a new coat of paint here or, you know, rip up the carpeting here and put a new flooring here. But, you know, the building is good. The classrooms are solid. It could use some attention, but like, you know, I think the attention's getting put there. If, if I had to decide right now without having more conversation on this as an elected school committee member, I'm going to go with the high school.
Okay. Any ideas what you'd do with it?
I think there's a lot of energy in the community towards renovating it or adding a new wing to it. One thing that I absolutely love about our high school is just, one, the building. You talk about it all the time. It's a fortress in our community. There's no way that building's going anywhere, so we're not going to knock it down. We have to rebuild or not rebuild, but renovate. I think the best option maybe going forward, again, just talking to you, just having, you know, all the energy that I feel in the community and like, you know, the building block understandings that I have to have a conversation with you. I think it might be best to, you know, renovate what's there. There's a lot in the high school that if we decide to rebuild, we lose. The auditorium, how will our music and our programs exist without that auditorium? Our, our pool, how will our, you know, you know, the pool? In freshman and sophomore year, we were required to take swimming and physical education class. I love that we have a pool for our swimmers to actually, you know, practice. And our community gets a lot of use out of that pool. Yeah, you know, I don't want to keep this school for the pool, but, you know, that's an asset in our community that we should try and keep, I think. So, you know, there's a lot that we lose if we rebuild. So maybe renovating is better. And I think there's a lot more energy in the community to renovate than rebuild because then the other question is, well, where do you put it? And a lot of people said, "Well, put it up the street here on 140 on Asylum Street." And frankly, if I made that decision, I live here on Dougalou Road. I'm not going to be able to come home and see my neighbors if I put a school right up next to me. So, you know, you know, there's, our options, I don't want to say are limited, but like, you know, we only have a few options as to what we can do. What makes the most sense to me here on, you know, what, on a Tuesday night talking to you? Maybe renovating. Will my feelings change in a year or two when I'm on the school committee and I have more conversations? Maybe. But right now, maybe, you know, renovating what's there is the best option.
And number three, your third biggest challenge. Talk about the population in Milford. I'm amazed when I hear some of the negative blowback on our special needs programs. You know, that we're recruiting kids from other towns. And it just seems amazing to me that I think our special needs programs are something we ought to be proud of. How do you feel?
Absolutely. The reasons why it's in my top three is because like, we have the need for it in the district. And the reason why our special education programs are as strong as they are is because the district understands the need that's there, and so they've made the proper investments to them. Great. You know, we're getting, you know, a couple of kids from up the road in Medway coming here for our special education programs. So what? That's a kid that we're educating. I don't care if, you know, some, you know, whatever. If we're educating a kid in our community, what's the problem?
Well, see, that's, that's been my position to say, "We're not going to do anything special, set up programs for non-Milford kids. We set up our programs for the kids in Milford. But if we help other kids along the way-
Beautiful.
You know, if that's the worst thing that I get thrown in my face when I stand in front of the pearly gates, I can live with that.
Look, look, if I'm getting criticized for helping my neighbors along the way, fine, criticize me. But hey, I'm going to help my neighbors along the way if there's an opportunity for us to help them.
Now, one of the things that always comes up recently is the immigrant population in town. Now let me start with a basic fundamental question. Are kids in Milford getting a good education?
Absolutely, they're getting a good education. I think every kid in Milford gets a good education. And if you just look around at, you know, some of our recent graduates, some of the schools that are about to be graduates have already gotten accepted in. They're getting great education. They're able to get accepted in, you know, into places like Brown and, I don't know, other top colleges. I'm not going to name a whole list for you, but, you know, other top colleges. If they're able to get into them, we must be doing something really good in town if that's the end result of being here for 12 years or however long you're here in Milford schools. So honestly, yeah, you're going to get a good education if you come here. Then again, you got to put in the work for it. You got to, you know, have to have the commitment to want this. You know, if you're going to show up to school every day and pick your nose and forget your homework, sure, you might not have a good outcome, but, you know, that's the personal choice. You may not, the results of our schools not doing what they have to do to educate you. So yeah, bottom line, you are going to get a good education if you come to our school. The, the, the details are in the pudding or whatever they say, you know? It's there. The facts are clear. Yes, you're going to get a good education in school. The outcomes are there that prove it.
Now, when we talk about special needs programs, most people think of the kids who need a little help to rise up to the median. How about we start with the top 10% of the kids? What are we doing? Those are special needs. If you're going to drive them, what are we doing to help them?
Are you talking about the top 10% of the kids that are, you know, college-bound and are taking the AP classes? Are we talking about that 10%?
Yeah. Yes.
We are obviously supporting them, and we are giving them every opportunity to succeed. Just look at the high school. We have a, we have a giant course of AP offerings. I believe we're starting to give kids opportunities to actually take college-level courses through the high school. So, you know, we're, just because we have one need here doesn't mean we're not looking at this need everywhere else. As a school, we're looking at everybody as a whole in the community. Our special education kids, our EL students, our top achievers, our athletes, our musicians. We're looking at everybody in the conversation as to, you know, what's best for us. Just because I listed, you know, EL and special needs and special ed as a, as one of our top three needs, is the top three needs because of what our population shows exists for those types of students. It's not because I am valuing their education more or less. It's because of the population that exists in Milford. We need to do everything we can to give every student every opportunity to succeed at every level they're at. And that includes those top performers and the kids in the middle and, and the kids at the, who need the extra support.
Now, when I grew up in Milford High, and I know that was back then when stone tablets really were used, but you had a choice. If you were going to college, you typically went to Milford High. If you weren't going to college and you wanted to get a trade, you went to BVT. I'm a little worried that right now to get into BVT, you have to be in the top 10 or 15% of the class. And I think of people like my father, who came to Milford, four years of school from Portugal. If you put him in an organic chemistry class, not going to do well. But you give the guy a tool, he was an artist. He could do anything with tools. What in your mind can we do for our kids who are craftsmen? They're talented. They're as smart as anybody else. They're as talented as you could imagine, but they can't get into a trade school because they're not academics or academicians. What do we do for them?
You hit, you, brilliant. Thank you, Al. I actually really liked the question. I'm actually really excited about it. I don't know how to start with it. Right now, Milford High School is recognizing the need that a lot of our students have. Many of them aren't on the college pathway. They're not planning on going to a four-year college. And there are some who are making that decision who later on in that journey realized, "That wasn't the best decision for me." Oops. It's a big expensive oops, but oops. So I think, so I recognize that Milford High School is making the changes needed to serve the people who are not on a college pathway but who are wanting to enter the workforce after high school. but who are wanting to enter the workforce after high school. Um, that don't have the opportunity to go into B V T because they're not top top ten percent of the class. Um, you know, we we enacted a building trades program. Um, we have a business and banking program. Um, there was the popular ho- hotel hospitality management program that, you know, we know what happened with that. I don't have to go back. Yeah, exactly. So, you know, our s- our school, our high school has made steps in the direction to give the kids that aren't on that college path the opportunity to get exposure into a career to maybe make that career into a lifestyle, but it's great. We gave the kid exposure to a career. How do they now make a career out of that? It's like, great, we brought a student to a college to show them the college. How do we now then get them into that college? Well, the way we get kids into college is that, you know, their guidance counselors who they worked with their whole high school career to set up their course loads, they help them find the right college that is for them. The right college isn't for everybody. College is not for everybody. Um, and just like we can't expect a kid to find out how to get into college by themselves, we can't really expect a kid to navigate the workforce successfully by themselves. So there's a budget proposal that's in um, that is in the budget this year for a career counselor at the high school, and I think that position will do wonders at accomplishing one of these goals that we're talking about, making sure that our kids have the post-secondary opti- opportunities for them without going to college, basically. Um, you know, there's a difference between having, you know, a job at McDonald's or Amazon versus having a career in the trades. Um, the difference is, you know, many people working at McDonald's or Amazon, they don't want to be there. Um, if that's what you wanna do for your life and that's where you're the most happiest and that's where you think you can give back the most fantastic work there, um, can I have a Shamrock shake with my with my order as well? Extra whipped cream, please. But, you know, um, I think that we as a school system should try and make sure that the kids who aren't gonna go to college, who want to do a trade, have the exposure to that career world that has the exposure to that networking that they're going to need to actually find and land a job like that. And right now, we already have the programs in place at the school to kind of give our students that exposure. We talked about the building trades program that we have, the business banking program that we have. Um, we need to build upon that. We need to get more programs into our space that will show our students a vast number of career opportunities that they have in front of them. And we then need to put in a career council of sorts that can help them navigate those opportunities when they have to leave high school.
Now, our population. A lot of people believe the diversity in Milford is a very strong attribute, something that helps our kids. But what do you say to the people who worry that when you get kids like me who showed up in the heist in the first uh, grade who couldn't speak anything but Portuguese, had no idea that English was even out there? Because they're worried that people like me are gonna take away from their kids and that the teachers will have to teach down to the lowest common denominator. What are your feelings on that? You've lived it. You were in high school pretty recently compared to people like me.
Again, Al, it's neighbors helping neighbors, right? Um, sure, if you wanna have the opinion that by having somebody from a different country in a classroom with you is going to bring down the level of education that I'm there for receiving, go off, I guess, but I'm gonna totally disagree with that. Um, when I was at Worcester State, um, when I was able to go back in person, I took a class on on the Beatles. Yes, I took a Beatles class. It was one of the funnest experiences I had, um, in Worcester State. Steve, the great Steve Minichell actually taught this class. Another reason why I took it, you know, why not hang out with Steve for a few hours and listen to the Beatles? Absolutely. Um, and in our class was a student that was there for the semester from, I'm from 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 a country in Asia. And she was getting, you know, a communications overview while she was here. One of the classes that she took was the Beatles class. She had no idea who the Beatles were. She's never heard of John Paul, George Ringo. She's never heard a single song by them. And so the really cool thing for me who like, you know, loves the Beatles since he picked up like, you know, their, you know, number one record CD that, um, you know, every, I'm sure everybody has seen the band. Um, every time we talk about them or we play a clip or like, you know, we'd listen to her song or something, we'd, you know, um, the professor would always make a point to turn to the fresh ears in the room who have no idea who this group is to say, what did you just think? Um, it was an amazing moment when he, um, when we were talking about Abbey Road and he played, um, something, the song Something by George Harrison. And at the end of it, he does as he always does. He he turned to, um, um, the student and asked, you know, what she thought. She was crying. She was crying. I I could not have had that experience. Well, sure, I could maybe have that experience of like, you know, somebody else that didn't know the Beatles, but like, you know, the fact that like, you know, there was this another worldly 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 view to bring into the classroom. It's amazing. And like the perspectives that she brought, it only furthered the conversations that we had about what the Beatles did in terms of changing the scope of media and what their music did for the music industry just going forward. So to have her perspective in the class from someone who you know, has never been to this country, um, who's never heard this band, that's super, super valuable, and I'm not gonna get that anywhere else. Um, and that's the same thing for like, you know, when we're having a half day at Milford High School and like somebody from another country brings a delicious dish into school that I've never had before, but it's fantastic and I wanna eat more of it. There's so much added value that students from other places that is not the center of the universe bring to us. Um, and what I get your original question is what would I say to the families that don't see that? Um, I I I don't know. I would just ask them to maybe spend some time with 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 people that aren't from the same places as they are and get to know them a little bit more and hear their stories, their experiences, where they're from. You know, hear about like, you know, their hopes, their dreams, their fears, cuz when I was in Milford Schools, that's what I that's what I did with my with my classmates. And many of those classmates were people from different countries. And that only further prepared me for a life after high school as I'm going into Boston every day, meeting people from all walks of life as I'm trying to organize a housekeeping unit in Tufts. Or as I'm at Worcester State University in a community that kind of sort of resembles Milford. So if so, you know, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of feelings that I have on this. Um, end of the day, I think you and everybody kind of see that like I love the diversity in our community because it brings out a lot of really good for us and for our students. And I think it only prepares everybody at the table for for a better life in what's going to be a more globalized world going forward by having the experience that they have with the students in our own backyard.
Yeah, I think you've hit and cuz a lot of people don't know the history of some sections in Milford. You know, when you look at the Prospect Heights, that was built by Drake Corporation. And they did things back then that would get them arrested today. But they did it for the right reasons. They built this entire set of row houses. And they told people zero to thirty, you can only live there if you're Portuguese. Thirty-one to sixty, you can only live there if you're Italian. And they set up a club. One of the thirty houses or apartments was set up to be a Portuguese club, an Armenian club, a Polish club. And they did it for all the right reasons cuz people were coming over from different countries. And they wanted to make it so that it was easier for them to assimilate. Can you imagine today being told, oh, you're Irish, you can't live in this section?
No, I obviously I can't imagine that. I mean, look, at when I'm with my family, you know, there's certain things that we do together cuz we're all from the same place. And I understand that people always have the desire to be around like-minded people, people that, you know, look like them and, you know, share a lot of the backgrounds that they do. Um, but that's really limiting a lot of people to a lot of exploration, learning and opportunities if those are the only types of people you surround yourself with.
Yeah, I think you've hit it because I was called Water Street, the great divide and uniter. Cuz when we were kids, Wednesday nights, you went to the band concerts in Hope Dale. Um, when you went over the hill in Water Street, all of a sudden, the kids from the Plains, the kids from Luby Ave, they're all our rivals cuz we were from the Heights. But the minute you went into Hope Dale, you turned your hat around.
Hmm.
And anybody who messed with a kid from the Plains was messing with Milford kids.
Hmm.
So you would automatically go defend them. Of course, when you came back, you said, okay, it's like cousins. Okay, go back to your house.
Yeah, the household divide, like I I can like, you know, push my brother down and be like, ha ha, at him at my house, but like, you know, if I walked into the Milford High School when we were there together and someone was doing that to him, we'd have a problem. Don't think twice, Matt, at home. You're gonna have like, you know, you know, same thing at home, but like, you know, I'm not gonna let somebody else do that to my people, right?
And that was the whole thing with Milford, you know, you talk about baby RJ, that if anybody got in his way, you would defend him.
Sure.
Didn't matter if you were Portuguese from the Heights, an Italian from the Plains. The only rivalry really came up is when you heard a new joke. Cuz you had to get it out and make it Italian before your best friends who are Italian made it Portuguese.
Yeah, yeah.
But it was all a family. And that's been, in my opinion, one of the strongest attributes of Milford is that we all come together regardless of where our parents came from.
Yeah, I mean, you and me, Al, know this together because we spent a lot of time like outside of all this at the Milford TV studio. There's a lot of like, you know, gentle ribbing that we do to each other at the studio. Why? Because, you know, we're friends, but you know, outside of that, like, you know, if I saw somebody on the corner of the road, like, you know, doing whatever, I'm gonna help you out because neighbors helping neighbors. That's what we do.
They all bleed Milford red, so you take care of them.
Of course, of course.
Talk about the schools and a lot of people are concerned because the test scores, when you look at MCAS scores, not this year, but in the past, Milford's MCAS scores, their standardized test scores were lower than other communities. How do you feel about that?
I think, well, how do I feel about that? Well, how much will this house that I'm sitting in here in Milford be worth if I moved to Holliston? Probably a little bit more cuz I'm now in Holliston. Um, different communities have different numbers and that's just that those are just numbers. Um, I think we talked a lot about in, you know, the last forty minutes, so about a lot of Milford needs, a lot about the different communities that we have in our in our schools, about the need that we have to make sure that, you know, our, you know, that we're servicing our EL students and our special education students the best that we can. And when we have you know, populations that have certain needs, we're going to have certain outcomes at because of the be- from those needs. And one of those outcomes is that test scores may not look like other communities because Milford doesn't look like other communities. Um, so, you know, when it comes to the test scores, look, we talked about it earlier again. We have students leaving Milford going to the top sc- uh, colleges in our country. Those students did as well as they could on the MCAS. We have students and by the way, MCAS standardized testing, I don't think that's a good measurement on on how good a student's doing and how far they've come. Um, anything could have happened on that one particular day we went in to take that one exam that says how good you're doing. I don't wanna hold up that number and say this is indicative of how we're doing. I think the community and our schools have different measurements. Uh, you know, the I ready that, um, our schools offer, you know, just the grades that they produce, if our students are happy or not. Um, I think it's other measurements that we as a community can be looking at to judge how our students are doing and how they're progressing their education. Um, MCAS is obviously important. We have to make sure that each student that we have is doing the best they can on that on that exam. Um, because that's just what we should be doing at the school. We should be making sure that our students are doing the best they can everywhere in our schools. Um, does that mean that everybody's gonna get an A plus? No, I would love for everybody to get an A plus, but like, you know, there's going to be some struggles along the way and there's going to be some Cs and some Ds and as long as our students can understand it's a D, I I can absolutely do better than this, and they work towards doing better than that. I think that's a better metric to look at versus well, here's a raw number compared to Holliston and Medway and Hopkinton. How do we compare? Again, we don't look like those communities. Our our school, the people who walk our buildings don't look like that, so it's unfair to say Milford should be held up to that standard.
Well, I think a lot of people don't really understand that Milford has a really large bimodal distribution. Our top kids, you know, if you, it's not a Gaussian curve. It's two Gaussian curves.
Yes.
Our top kids do as well as anybody.
Yes.
RJ, you're not the smartest, you're not the dumbest, you're a good kid. But if I put you in a situation where I said, in two years, I want you to take a standardized test in Mandarin.
I I don't know how that's gonna happen. I'm gonna be honest with you, Al. I mean, I can learn a lot overnight, but you know, doing a test in Mandarin, not sure how that's gonna happen.
Well, it's the same thing we're doing with kids who never spoke English.
Sure. And we can say, and sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go go ahead.
No, sure, I was gonna say, it's just exactly that, you know, people wanna look at like, you know, the MCAS and say, oh, it's just a math exam. How are these kids doing so badly? Well, hold on a second. Let's look at exactly what is on that math exam. Train A is traveling from the station at train B going this many miles per hour and blabbity, blabbity, blah, blah, blah. If you can't even read about the train going this many miles an hour, how are you going to construct the 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 formulas and 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 the work needed to get to the answer of that solution? If I can't read the word problem in front of me, which, you know, I had, you know, knowing that going through the MCAS, I know this, a heavy amount of the math MCAS is word problems, but I can't read that, I can't do it. So if our, so, you know, if our EL students can't speak and read English, we can't expect them to walk in and take an MCAS test in a language that they don't know and expect that they're going to get a positive result from because that's not going to happen. It's just not.
Yeah, it's back to me trying to take a test in Mandarin.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not the smartest, I'm not the dumbest person around, but I don't know that I would score the average compared to native.
Sure, sure.
Lot of attention's been put on the school choice numbers.
Hmm.
Do you have any comments on school choice?
I love our schools and if I had the choice in the matter, everybody would be going to our schools because I think they have a lot of good to offer. Um, unfortunately, you know, parents have certain rights that are worried to them, and one of those rights is saying, where do I get to send my kid to school? And I can't argue with that. Um, if a parent makes a decision to send their kid elsewhere that isn't Milford, that's their choice. I don't wanna argue with that. And as a school committee member and as a person, I'm not gonna change a parent's mind once they made a decision, this is what's best for my kid. Um, is it a negative impact on our district when our student leaves? Of course it is. Um, do we have a reason as to why our students leaving are are leaving? No, they've looked at this from a lot of different angles to say, is it this reason? Is it that reason? Is there something we're not offering? Is there something that's here that, you know, they don't approve of? And there's no concrete reason as to why students are choicing out of our schools. I wish I could give you one. It would all just be hearsay and what I heard this person wanted to leave for and what this person wanted to leave for and what this person thought was better over here or whatever, you know. There's no concrete answer, and that's what's so complicated and complex about school choice. It's 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 bad financially for us when we have to send our money elsewhere. Um, but also like, you know, it's a right that the parents have. And I can't argue with them if they decide something else is best for their kid. Um, um, it's it's tough. It's 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 a really hard conversation to have, you know, we we, you know, we have eleven minutes left. Um, we're not gonna get really in-depth into school choice in eleven minutes, but you know, it's a complicated subject. Um, I would love for everybody to look at our schools and see what I see in them. I know that's not the case. Um, I know that there's work that we can do to improve them. Um, and the work's being done and I'm and I want to be there to help get that work done to make them better. But, you know, when a parent makes a decision to send them elsewhere, that's, I I don't wanna say that's it, but like, you know, there's nothing that I as a school committee member can do to bring them back. And we need to take a hard look at ourselves each time a student decides or a family decides, hey, over here is better for us. Um, you know, it hurts seeing our students decide, you know, oh, I'm I'm gonna live in Milford. I love Milford, but you know, Milford schools, no. Everybody should take it really personally that, you know, somebody decided to send their kid elsewhere. Um, so, you know, we should figure, you know, I wish I had an answer. I wish the school had an answer. They don't, but you know, it's a complex subject. So, you know, we should figure, you know, I wish I had an answer, I wish the school had an answer, they don't, but you know, it's a complex subject. And I don't blame them for looking at it and coming out with it going, there's a lot of reasons, but we don't have a singular one. It's a very personal decision, who'd you vote for? I'm not going to, I'm not going to expect you to tell me, I'm not going to tell you. But there's a lot of thought and, you know, determination and personal choices and considerations that had to be made into that. And, you know, if somebody makes one decision, there's not going to be a lot that you can do to make them decide something else. That's the same thing with education and what's best for a family. So, you know, what do I think about school choice? I wish, you know, you know, everybody could stay in Milford, I wish. There's a lot of wishes, there's no reason why kids are leaving, it's a detriment to our district, and I do take it personally when someone decides, you know, someplace else is better for their child than us. But, you know, it's a complex topic. There's a lot of moving parts, there's no one answer, but you know, school choice is school choice, it's an issue that we have to be mindful of and keep track of, but it's very, very complex, and I don't have, you know, concrete answers for you on a lot, because you know, the concrete's just, it's not dry, and it's never going to be dry. But, you know, that's, I guess, what I think about school choice.
How do you think we will stack up against the neighboring towns?
How do I think Milford will stack up against the neighboring towns?
Schools.
How do I think our schools stack up against the neighboring schools? I think what our schools offer compared to the neighboring schools are, 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 are fine. I think that there are certainly opportunities that other schools have the financial ability to give us, to give their students that maybe we don't have. Maybe, you know, they might have like a newer, prettier school, you know, I know Franklin has a new high school with, you know, the minute my aunt walked into Franklin, she was telling me all about their, you know, brand new TV studio they have in there. And boy, would I love a brand new TV studio in Milford High School for those students to take an opportunity of using, you know. I know what benefit that had to me, and I know what benefit that'll have for students that they got that opportunity, but you know, that's not something that we have the opportunity to offer. You know, I think we, at every single school in our area, we do a great job at educating our students to the best of our ability with what we have, as everybody does. Do other schools perhaps give more, do other schools perhaps have more resources to invest in their schools to make them different from us? Sure, but, you know, we, our Milford schools are fantastic, they get the job done, and just look at the outcomes again. Our top kids are going to the same schools as Holliston's top kids and as Hawkinson top kids. They're all meeting at the end of the day. Just because Milford has certain needs that we have to be mindful of and make sure that they're being met that other towns don't have, doesn't mean that we are any lesser, you know, any better than them. That just makes us Milford.
We've gone through all our questions, so I'm going to throw a new one at you. Are Milford school systems, are the schools safe for our kids?
Yes, yes, I, I, when I went to our schools, I always felt safe in our schools. Now again, you know, I graduated in twenty fourteen, it's been a long, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, six, seven years. So, you know, a lot has happened in the last six, seven years in the world. COVID is a big reason for a student to maybe not feel safe entering that building. Are schools safe? Yes, they are. We, of course, as a community, as you know, have made investments to make sure that, you know, our kids are safe, you know, we have, you know, PPE for our staff and everything for when we go back in person. Milford Police do a great job of making sure our buildings are secure and protected, and that nobody who shouldn't be in there should be in there. So, do I think our schools are safe? Certainly.
Do you like the idea of having the SWAT team in the schools?
I I can understand their need, I can see what will happen if we don't have them on the premises. I can see that the value that they bring in our schools. I, I, basically, yes, I think they're essentially, we're better with them, without them, we're better to have them than not to have them.
Well, I remember what made me vote for them was when we were told we can get a regional SWAT team to Milford within forty-two minutes. And then I read that most school shootings were over in eighteen to twenty.
Yeah.
And I just sat there and said, oh my God, so twenty minutes after it's all done? We're going to have the cavalry show up? That's scary.
No, that's, that's, that's not the situation we want to be putting anybody we're sending our building, into our buildings in. Like I said, it's better to have that resource there than to need it and not have it in that circumstance.
RJ, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
Al, I think that you should vote for me for school committee, because I believe that my unique perspective on the issues at hand as a younger person in our community, and my knowledge on the workings, the functions, the role versus of the school committee and its members, and just the understanding that I have of our town government from just being involved in our community for so long. I think that there's a lot of good that I can bring to the table at the school committee. I already ran for this office once. You don't run for office just because, A, it looks fun and I want to try it out. No, you run for the office because you truly, truly believe that there's something that you need to give back to the community and that, and that's, that's where I am right now. I ran once. I'm here again running because this still really, really matters to me, I still have the care and conviction to want to serve on the school committee. And frankly, when we talk about the last time I ran, what do all my town crierads say? I want to ensure that our students have the, have a better educational experience than the student before them. That's not happening right now. We need to make sure that we can get our kids back into the building and get them all back into a sense of normalcy. And I think that I could be a positive, unique voice at the table to make sure that happens. So I hope you will vote for me, for our school committee.
Do you think, being a recent grad, and I know you don't consider yourself recent, but compared to me, who is, you know, forty-some years out of there, gives you a unique perspective on the school?
Not only that, but I'm, but if I were to be elected, I believe that I would be the only committee member who does not have school-aged children. I remember Mike Walsh went onto the school committee after his kids were out of the district, because he didn't want anybody to have any, any confusion as to what his motivations were of being on school committee. And, you know, I don't want to compare myself to Mike Walsh, but like, I'm doing this because I care about our community and I want to see us be better for the future. I'm not doing this to help out my kids along the way, or to, or, or, you know, there's no, I don't want there to be any misconceptions of why I'm here. I'm here because I care and I truly, truly want to give back where I see I best can.
Well, as I said, my hat's off to you and everybody who stands up and says, I'm willing to work for this town. I mean, life at the center of the universe only gets better when Milfordians get together. And I've never seen, you know, we joked about what Beacon Hill would tell us to do. And I remember saying, I don't need anybody from Capitol Hill in Washington or Beacon Hill in Boston, I get the town meeting. And they've taken care of Milford kids better than any government agency ever has. I've never seen town meeting let down our kids. So thank you for putting your hat in the ring and helping.
Thank you for having me, Al.
And as always, to our six loyal viewers, I always promise I'll never ask you to vote for a single specific candidate. But I'll beg you to vote. On April sixth, please, pick one of the candidates and be educated on your pick. Town Crier has a forum, I love that the high school has a forum. The citizens from Milford have a forum. You know, there's plenty of forums around, so you can get to know somebody. And then pick somebody who you believe really has the best interests of Milford at heart. So as always, good night, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better day than today. Good night, thanks RJ.
Thank you, Al, thanks again.